I'm not able to hear anything that's happening in council chambers right now. Can you all hear me? Curious if other people online are able to hear.
I can hear you, Sonya, but nobody else.
Yeah, here we go. Can you hear us now?
I can hear you now, loud and clear. Thank you.
Alright, so just for everyone, we all just voted to make Sonya the chair, and I'm gonna take the rest of the meeting. Yeah, thank you. Thank you for joining. So that was the roll call, and everybody's here. It was Council Bertholz attending online. Agenda review, are there any items under agenda review from any councils? Council Baker? We can, we'll move that to new business. That's gonna coincide nicely with the town manager's report too, so. Can we, Shelley, can we move that as close to? Well, that'll be the end of new business. Okay, great. Any other agenda items for review? Yep. Item number three is approval of minutes for June 10th, 2024, and June 24th, 2024. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any items for discussion? I think the minutes are a remarkable amount of work when you read through them, and they're a fantastic resource, so I appreciate staff's efforts. All those in favor of approving the minute, we have to do it by roll call, right? Because Sonya, yep. Even if it's unanimous. Okay, we'll take a roll call on approval of the minutes. Council Powers?
In favor.
Councilor Baker?
Favor.
Council Kenny?
Favor.
Council Marks?
In favor.
Council Bertholz?
In favor.
Council Larway?
In favor.
And Council Demerit in favor. It's unanimous, seven to zero. Okay, now we have a public comment. Is there anyone online, Pete, with their hand raised for public comment?
None at this time.
Anyone in the audience? And Michelle? Michelle Dunn has a special announcement to make. Can you go to the podium and turn on the mic? Please, and introduce yourself. Thank you, Michelle.
Hi, everybody. I'm not really sure where to look. I'm here today representing the fire department. A number of our gentlemen are receiving the Phoenix Award today. The Phoenix Award recognizes and celebrates the valiant efforts of first responders who successfully resuscitate individuals experiencing cardiac arrest, ultimately leading to the patient's full recovery. These gentlemen today are receiving the award for a cardiac arrest that took place last summer. Took-
Michelle, could you speak up a little bit or a little closer to the mic? Thank you.
The resuscitation efforts took eight of them, and the patient made in complete and full recovery, total brain function. So that's huge. We're really excited and just here to present some of these guys that are available today with the award. A number of the gentlemen who are receiving the award are currently on a call. Hopefully, they will be joining us shortly. There are also award recipients who weren't available today, but I would like to mention them by name. I'm just gonna go for it. So the first person receiving an award is Metzy Mormy. He is on the code right now. He was one of the eight, so thank you, Metzy. And next, we have Robert Mellow, who is with us today. Thank you, Robert. The next award is for Kenneth Larrabee. We also have Samuel Wiseman. Next, we have Caleb Bean. Jordan McGlawn. And the final recipients of the award were Deputy Chief Kevin Sirwa and our former Fire Chief Jeffrey Lowe. Thank you all.
Thank you, Michelle, and thank you all very much for your service to our community, and life-saving service to our community is as signified by tonight's award. So thank you for that. Thank you for coming tonight. If there are no further public comments, and good luck topping that, if anybody has anything. We'll start with public hearings. And item number five on our agenda, to consider a Victual's license for the Donut Grove LLC 153 Park Street Suite, Suite B.
Hi there, Mitch Stone, Director of Community Economic Development. I am standing in for our code officer, Pat Estey, who is on vacation. All inspections and recommendations are reviewed by code enforcement officer, fire inspector, police chief, and the town clerk. The, for the Donut Grove, staff is recommending approval.
Any questions from the council? Any comments from the public? Yep, we will close public hearing A and move on to public hearing B to consider a Class Four Tavern Liquor License, Special Amusement Permit for Music, Dancing, and Entertainment, and Victual's License for Timothy Gallen, DBA Black Bear Brewery, 19 Mill Street, Suite Four.
So staff is also recommending approval for Black Bear Brewery. There was some late question, but I just got a text that said everything is good to go, so.
Excellent. Any questions from council? Any comments from the public? Okay, we will close public hearing B. We'll open public hearing C to consider a Class One Malt Liquor Wine and Spirits Liquor License, Special Amusement Permit for Music, Dancing, and Entertainment, and Victual's License for Marsh Island Brewing LLC to Main Street.
And staff is recommending approval as well.
Any questions from council? Any comments from the public? Okay, we will close public hearing C and move on to public hearing D to consider a Class One Malt Liquor Wine and Spirits Liquor License and Victual's License for Z R K M LLC, DBA Taco Rita to Mill Street.
And staff is recommending approval.
Any comments or questions from council? Any comments from the public? We will close public hearing D and move on to public hearing E to consider a Class A Restaurant Lounge, 11 Malt Liquor Wine and Spirits License, Special Amusement Permit for Music, Dancing, and Entertainment, and Victual's License for Woodman's LLC, DBA Woodman's Bar and Grill, 31 Main Street. Mitch?
Staff is recommending approval.
Any questions from council? Any comments from the public? We will close public hearing E and open public hearing F to consider renewal of a marijuana establishment retail store license for Red Brick and Mortar, DBA Firestorm of Orno, Six Stillwater Avenue, Suite 300.
Once again, staff is recommending approval.
Okay, any questions from council? Any comments from the public? Yep, we will close public hearing F, and thank you, Mitch, for your, for your time. And I would want to acknowledge this tremendous amount of work that goes into these, and for those, for us, and for those paying attention at home, these hearings go really quickly because staff does a really good job of getting the materials together and doing their diligence before it comes to us, so. So thank you for that. We'll close the public hearings, move on to item six on our agenda, acknowledgements by council members, and we'll go with Council Baker first.
I don't have anything.
Okay. Council Powers?
I'd like to just have a final thank you to Cornell, who's still here. So thank you for everything that you've done for us, Cornell. I really appreciate all the times I've interacted with you a great deal, and for your wonderful updates every week about what's going on. And I hope to run into you again at Bar Harbor sometime.
Council Kenny?
Yes, so I've had to write this down, and I probably will miss someone, and I apologize if I do, but I basically wanted to acknowledge all of staff for rising to the occasion of having an interim town manager for, I guess, about the last four months, maybe, and no director of public works for maybe two, two and a half.
We only paid, we only paid Cornell for four months.
It's been seven. See, I didn't do the math. It's been seven months.
Yeah.
December, yeah.
Yeah.
Then I really, really want to acknowledge. Oh my God, time flies, and we're having fun, I guess, doesn't it? So, alright, so completely, so how long have we not had a director of public works? I thought that was two, two and a half, but I did not look at any dates.
Three, maybe, three?
Alright, well, I want to acknowledge all of staff, specifically, I want to call out some, I want to call out some specific staff who I feel like maybe just because they've been sort of stuck with a little bit of a bored role at times. I want to acknowledge Mitch Stone, Shelley Crosby, I feel like have jumped in kind of everywhere that's needed. I feel like, you know, the the dam with the holes in it, plugging the fingers, and that's all I can picture is these guys just, just going like that. I'd also mention Mike Smart, who stepped in for, when, when Rob left, Chris Prue for taking the reins on the Webster Projects, Project, and Megan Mazzella, who also grabbed a facilities hat to help us get our pool back in order, which I think we're getting an update today, but I know it's been a lot on, on all staff, but I feel like maybe it's the board duty piece for these particular staff that I've mentioned, and why I kind of wanted to call them out. With that said, I'm, I'm really happy that we have a new town manager sitting here. And we have our new director of, director of public works here, and this will obviously allow Mike and Chris and Megan to take those, those duties off their plates, which I'm sure will be welcomed. I have a feeling Mitch and Shelley will continue to help with a lot of institutional knowledge here in the central office as, as the new town manager comes up to speed, so. But really appreciate all of the effort of, and the entire staff, because I know it's been, it's been, it's been taxing on all. And then just one more, I want to acknowledge Zach Turner, our finance director, who was chosen to, to take on a new opportunity. Zach has, has really developed, I think, over this past year, and I appreciate what he's done for Orno in his time here, and want to wish him well in this, his new endeavor. That's it. That's all for me. Seven months.
Council Marks?
Thanks, and thanks to Matt and Leo for those things that I would have shared otherwise. I think I will thank the Historical Society. Bob Sinclair led a really amazing tour of Webster neighborhood. On Sunday, Esther helped out, and Bill Henderson and others behind the scenes, Jack Moose. So there were 21 people in attendance. It was a great time, and I really appreciate the Historical Society for doing that. I want to shout out our fellow councillor, Rob Larway, down here, who was in an amazing show down in Bar Harbor, not town-related, but it was pretty darn impressive two-person musical, so I wanted to say thank you. It was a really enjoyable night. And on the minutes, I just wanted to thank both Shelley and especially Amanda, who, maybe I'm wrong, but I'm under the impression maybe that was a new thing for Amanda to learn, and those minutes that I read, I mean, they're amazing, Amanda, so thank you very much.
Council Bertholz?
Yes, I would love to acknowledge all of the hard work that's going into planning the Orno Arts Fest with MJ and all of, all of the artists who are coming together to participate in that, as well as town staff's role in supporting that sort of blossoming initiative, looking forward to it.
Thank you. Council Larway?
Just that I've heard great things from the folks who live over in Forest Ave about the ongoing engagement that staff has had with them, showing a real commitment to hear the concerns of the community and figure out how best to serve the needs of folks in every neighborhood. So the Forest Ave folks have been vocal, letting me know how much they appreciate that. So thank you all for your work, helping figure out how to make our community safer.
I had six things, and six things were acknowledged, so I, I just want to, I'll echo a lot of it. I'm particularly impressed with the Orno Arts Fest and the work that MJ has done to bring that together for us. And thank Clint for his work and his engagement in, in terms of getting started. I think he's worked hard to get the, hit the ground running for us here in Orno, and he's, you can, his, his energy is, is palpable, and I'm really looking forward to working with him, um, behalf of the council, but behalf of the whole community. So those were good acknowledgements today. One of the, I'm gonna start, I'm gonna go first, one of, sooner, yeah. Okay, item seven is unfinished business. Do we, I don't think we have any unfinished business. Okay, item eight is a consent agenda. We removed or, an order changing the July 15th council committee meetings to a special council meeting. Could I get-
Could I, could I also ask to remove 24 143? Just understand, just understand it a little.
Sure. Any objection to that, right? Taking that off and having a discussion? So we'll move 24 143? We can do that anytime in a meeting, right? I mean, I'm inclined, I'd want to do that. Doesn't have to be at the start of the meeting under agenda review. It can be the start of, yep, that's right thought. Yep, okay, good. Yeah, no, it's much better to get questions answered than to not have, you know, a vote for something. Alright, so can I get a motion on the consent agenda less, order 24 143, and order 24 144?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. I will have to do a roll call. And we'll start with Councilor Powers?
Approved.
Council Baker?
Approved.
Council Kenny?
In favor.
Council Marks?
In favor.
Council Bertholz?
In favor.
Council Larway?
In favor.
Council Demerit is in favor. Uh, so it passes unanimously? Excuse me. Now move on to new business, order 24 144, an order accepting the bid received from Von D Thibodeau, second of Bangor, Maine, for $1,381,350 for Webster Avenue infrastructure improvements. So we'll take an order to get it on our jet, get it on the floor, and then open it up to discussion and input from staff, I believe.
So moved.
Okay, moved by Council Powers?
Seconded.
Seconded by Council Larway. Cornell or Clint, are we gonna have a staff walk us through it to begin with, or do we want to? Yep.
Can I just ask maybe the, the upfront, kind of a process question? When, you know, this obviously was in the budget, but it's, it's, where it's come back, and it's a pretty significant project. It's 1.3 million. It's over budget. There are some other things going on with it that we've been notified of. I'm just, feel like this maybe would be better served in a committee meeting rather than just coming for approval, because I feel like there's enough, enough going on, and to have the ability to get in detail, ask questions, not put staff on the spot with regards to questions, allow them to come back, and just wondering if that is, I would like to consider having this go to-
That would be, I think we should hear from staff and discussion, and that should, would be a perfectly appropriate amendment. You know, you could, you move to, assign this to a committee at some point later in the discussion, if that's something you wanted to do. And we would consider it as a council. Okay. Christopher?
Yes, good evening, Christopher of WPCF. I do want to mention that Mandy is with us tonight online from Oliver Associates that designed this project, so if you have questions for her, she's available. And we also have voids here from Orno Weezy Water. He had the alternate bid, and he's, he's rejected his bid, and he's gone and found other ways to, other resources to get his part of the work done, if you want to talk to him about that. As far as the towns portion of the project, it did come in overestimate, and we have several options. I do have enough in my reserves. I have, I have five, almost 550 in my infrastructure reserve. I could take 96 out of that, 96,000. This project being done in '25 is gonna go beyond the next budget cycle. I could just budget in my capital. Another option is to add more ARPA money to the project. That would be up to you. But those are the options to deal with the, with the overage. It's kind of, kind of a strange situation. Public Works has more in this project than we do, and their part of the project is 22, 22,000 less than estimated, and mine is $96,000 more. I, I can't explain why that happened, neither can Mandy. You just sometimes can't explain how contractors bid jobs. But that's what we have in front of us for options.
Okay, do we have questions for Chris? Council, Council Marks?
Chris, can you just repeat again those three options? They just went by me a little bit fast. I heard one was the extra 96 could come from your capital reserve account.
Infrastructure.
Infrastructure reserve account, okay. And the second option was you could put it in your capital budget for the next year.
Into my budget next year.
What was the third? That's the one I missed.
More ARPA money.
More ARPA, okay, thank you. Can someone on the staff talk to us about what is the current status of our ARPA money? Amount left there that isn't already budgeted to go somewhere else?
I, I thought I heard a figure of 130 left in ARPA, all told.
Thank you.
Mandy, do you have any other questions for, yeah, Council Baker?
So I know we've hashed out this project a lot, so sorry for this question, but so the bids we're looking at, you've got your base bid, which is sewer, public works, or your base bid is public works, the alternate bid is sewer, and then there's an additional component to the problem, to the project, which is water.
The alternate bid would be work that, that the Orno Weezy Water District is gonna do within the same neighborhood.
Okay.
So it's an alternate bid because they're separate from the town, it's separate money.
Okay, so the water district has, is not doing their portion of the project.
They're gonna do it, but they're not gonna do it with this contractor.
Okay.
They, they rejected this contractor's bid for his part of the work.
Okay.
And he's gone and found his, his own contractor that says he can do it cheaper.
Okay, so then the base bid is public works and sewer then?
Right. That, that, that was, the base would, the base bid was always that.
Yeah, okay. I just want to understand what exactly these numbers are. Okay, and then my follow-up question, and actually, the more I, we talk about this, the more I am inclined to agree with Leo, is that, so if yes, I know that, you know, public works and sewer came in lower than our budget, but-
No, they came in over.
I thought water came in higher and-
No, total public works and sewer came in higher. Public works portion came in lower.
Okay.
Sewer came in higher.
Okay.
The, the entire bid is over original estimate.
Yeah, okay.
By how much, Chris? 70-ish, 70 something?
96, 96.
Well, the whole thing's over by 96.
Yeah.
Not just the, not so the 96 is not just the part for sewer?
The sewer was 96, 950 over.
Uh huh.
Public Works part of the project, the stormwater, was actually $22,000 less.
So that adds up to 74, total, 74 over?
But I can't have the 24 to 22,000 he's saving. I wish I could. I don't think, I don't think Bill's gonna give it to me.
So can I, my question again is for council, I guess, or maybe for Chris, I'm not sure, but it, what is the, is there any reason not to put this to committee? I think it, it opened on June 20th, and I think there are 60, it's good for 60 days, I think, if I was reading that correctly. It said, it said this bid can't be withdrawn for 60 days, or something like that.
Right.
So, so June 20th is when it was opened, July 20th, August 20th, I'm better counting those two months than I am how long we've had an interim town manager, but is there any sense of, is there any reason why we wouldn't have some additional time? And again, there's, there's several reasons in my mind why we should. One, being over budget. Two, we were initially advised that, you know, we had to do this with Orno Weezy Water District, which they, I, I, just learning, I guess, that they've coming up and doing their own thing. I was looking at this as they've been basically kicked out of this, and when they weren't getting it met, but they're doing it another way, apparently, which I'd like to know, learn more about as well. But thirdly, we, we have a new director of public works who is ultimately responsible for this whole thing, I believe. He's been here for two or three weeks, and I would really think it would serve us well to allow him to get his arms around this, and, and what would be the reason for not doing that?
Well, if you reject this bid now, it's just gonna cost more later. I can, I can tell you that.
Not necessarily, I don't think.
I, I guess the question, Leo, if I could maybe help, but I promise I won't try and hurt this time. Or counter, I mean, I guess the question from, in my mind, is if, if we consider a motion to refer this to a committee for another discussion, is that we still, we have until August 20th to act on the bid, right? I mean, I suppose the contractor could withdraw it.
You have until the 20th. Is that correct, Mandy? You're there?
Yes, I am. Um, yes.
Can you speak to that?
Yes, we, you do have 60 days, and the contractor cannot withdraw their bid without penalty. There's a 5% bid bond that we require to come in with bids so that people can't back out of things, because there's a cost to doing the bidding process, and we don't want people to bid, and then all of a sudden say, whoops, I didn't mean it. So they won't pull out within two, two months. You, you do have some time, if you want to take some time and talk about it. I do have to echo what Chris just said. I don't think you'll get a lower bid if it's rebid, and, and not to, you know, disagree with any other way of going at this project, but as far as bidding it out to a general contractor, I don't believe will do better. Unfortunately, it's just the way the market is these days. And I don't see it changing anytime soon.
So does, Mandy, does the bid, and Chris, does the bid before us kind of get to the things that we, we had a walkthrough in the, in the neighborhood, in, in, in the Webster neighborhood? And there is, I think, I left that in, in the discussions we had this spring with with this, with the implying or, you know, with the suggestion or commitment that we were gonna get this done for the neighborhood, and we're gonna have a project that came back that got, that addressed their needs to the, the best that we could, as we understood them at the time of that walkthrough. Do you think the response that we got before us now delivers on that? And to, I mean, I, I know it's not gonna happen till next year, and we have several weeks before the bid, you know, would be withdrawn, but do you think this project before us delivers on, on what the neighbors, the residents in the Webster neighborhood are, are expecting?
Well, it's certainly consistent with what was presented to the council and to the folks when we did our walk. There, there hasn't been anything reduced or taken away from that. And just to back up a little bit and clarify about the way that the bidding is set up between the district and the town. It's common practice when we've involved the district in past projects to have their work go out as an alternate bid, and we do it for a couple of reasons. One is because the town's work in, in general, and because of the town project, is much more of the scope, and we want to be able to proceed without any negotiating or discussion with the contractor. If the district chooses, as they have in this case, because the price was high, to step back, we don't have to go back and renegotiate that. We said right from the start, the base bit of this project is the town work, which is the sanitary sewer and the storm drain. And therefore, it's, it's set up really clearly that you don't have to do the water work. The other thing is during the project, if the district was in the project with us, gives us a really easy way to make sure everybody's paying for their own work. There's no arguing about who did traffic control, who did erosion control. It's all laid out in a separate bid item by the contractor, and easy to track for, for everybody's accounting.
But in terms of the water district and, and the work they're gonna do, will you still be able to coordinate that work with this bid from Thibodeau?
Yes, I, I'm sure we can. You know, it, it, yeah, I'm sure we can find a way to do that, and it's, it's good work that should get done. You know, older lines that need to be replaced, it really, especially with the roads being redone, it would be in everybody's- especially with the roads being redone, it would be in everybody's best interest, which is why the district wanted to participate. They just, in all fairness, you know, to them, the, the pricing, if, if you look at the, the price of the water, the low bidder for the town was the highest bid for the district. I mean, by, by significant amount, you couldn't see any justification of them proceeding with that.
Counselor Marks?
Mandy, can I just ask for the neighborhoods sake to understand, would the work all still happen? I know it's not this summer, it's next summer, but would both, both parts of the work still happen next summer and would the roads only be ripped up once for that work then between the town's part and the water district's part? Or would the roads get, is it still possible to coordinate to that degree so that for the neighborhood, it's a one-time rip up? Or are we looking at ripped up once, put back together, ripped up again later?
I'm sorry, I'm not gonna be able to answer that because I'm not sure. Um, you, you've got Boyd in the room. He, he may have a better sense of what he's got for a contractor, if anybody's available this year, if it's next year. I don't know.
You come up. Thank you. Thanks, Chris.
Yeah, Boyd Smith for the Orno VZ Water District. So I've been there for thirty years. And to open with that statement is this is nothing new for us. We have done this in years past on the Dennis Cross. We have installed water mains, we have worked with contractors, and we absolutely can work with this contractor and only rip it up once. But I hope people understand I'm doing this in the best interest of the rate payer because at four hundred ninety six thousand dollars in my quick figuring, trying to get quotes in fairly quickly, I'm figuring high right now, I can probably do it for two hundred and eight. So it's a significant savings and I've got full, we've done this, I've got, everybody on my crew has worked for construction in the past, so I know we can do this. It's a two-inch water main. Sixteen inch water main would be different. It'd be like, yeah, that's a little big for us, but we absolutely can pull this off and work with the contractor at the same time. So.
So you're gonna do this internally with your staff, with the crew you have now?
Yeah, so we, we work with Scott Instrom. He's the one that has worked for us for well over thirty years because he was digging when I came there. And he's the one that shows up in the middle of the night at one o'clock in the morning. He's been a great asset for the water district. He works well with us. And really does well with his rates with us. That's why I can usually do it fairly cheap. But um, yeah, we're gonna have our own contractor. He'll bring some of his crew with him. So it'll be all us staff and his crew.
So just to kind of reiterate what you just said, Boyd, four ninety six was the quote and you're getting it done for two oh, two oh eight with kind of a combo of contractor and little bit of hands-on with your staff. Again, I don't want to overstate the obvious, but this is exactly what I've been requesting. Once we have a director of public works, we consider doing. To Chris's point, I, I one hundred percent agree. We go out again for quote, it's not coming back cheaper. But I don't think that means we can't do something. I mean, sixty percent, if we save thirty five percent, it's about five hundred thousand dollars. So why we would have to rush and make a decision before we have our director of public works? Just see if there's anything that can be shaped from this. I mean, if, um, we, we have a lot of information in front of us and it's, it's kind of bizarre. It looks like one of these contractors maybe didn't want to bid it with some ridiculous pricing in there. But, you know, twenty thousand, thirty thousand for, for traffic control on Pond Street and I mean, it seems a little like maybe that's not realistic to me, but and the, the other, so again, I would implore council to take our time with this and see what we, I don't know why we would not consider saving five hundred. Because if it's, if we were to, if, and we probably can't do what they've done, public waterworks, uh, it's a smaller project, I understand that. But if we save sixty percent, it's six hundred thousand, seven hundred thousand dollars. I just don't understand why we wouldn't consider that.
Counselor Marks?
Um, I guess to, to Leo's point, what I would most like to do is, is just to hear from staff because my understanding, Leo, is we've had quite a lot of discussions about it so far in committee meetings and if staff is saying to us, yes, we think it could be possible that there might be savings to be had if we take a second look and do whatever, then I understand. But if, if everyone on our staff is saying no, we don't think that's possible. Then I really want to respect that. I heard um Ward say that for the water district, they do this often. They have a system for this. They know how this goes. I guess that hasn't felt to me like what we're hearing from our staff. Um, so if Chris or Clint or Cornell or anyone else wants to let us know if they feel like our new a public works director, I can't see, I know you're back there. If any of you would like to come up and tell us, in your opinion, is there value to slowing this down and taking a look at what we can do internally or not? That's really what I want to be guided by. And I'm, at that point, for me, if staff are saying no, we really don't think so, then I'm ready to move forward. Otherwise, I'm certainly willing to pause.
I agree. Do you think, um, and maybe this is, it's Clint's first day. Bill's been a couple of weeks for Bill and I bet, I, I very understay, I appreciate where Leo's coming from and he's made a passionate case about it. It feels like we've got some time from what we're being told by our consultant, um, where we have, we have an offer on the table. And I don't know, Clint, if take, taking it over to you, instead of talking about it tonight and putting staff on the spot, could you work with Counselor Kenny? And try and pursue what he's got in mind and come back to us? Yeah, but I mean, for me, it's August twen, I'm, I'm voting for this thing that's in front of us by, before we lose it, if, unless you can come up with something better. Does that make sense? Is that? If, so to this extent that can move us along and put, you know, put good people around the table talking about it. What's the right format for a, a motion? Is it, should we table it? Should we?
Well, if you, if you table it, you should have a date that you're gonna table it to. If you refer to committee, it will go to committee and then committee can um, reach consensus.
Yeah, let's table it to an actual council meeting if we, or a, a meeting that's already on the books, if that's okay. So we, does that make sense to people or Clint? Or others? I mean, I just thought, we're, we're still having.
I mean, a lot to consider here, and I don't know all the information you've heard or what everybody knows to date that I may not have heard. So it is a little bit of a loss, and I'm sure Bill's in the similar spot. Giving us a chance to meet more than through an email or a phone call may be helpful for us to have a face-to-face before that decision is made if you really want to delay. I will share, I, I think you've come to a really good conclusion. Rebitting this is not gonna result in a savings to the town. So you need to secure that bid. I would postpone to a date certain.
Yep.
And I would probably say off the top of my head, you better do it for the first meeting in August since this expires August twentieth.
Yep.
And that we're coming in with a firm recommendation that we vetted and saying this is the direction we're gonna go.
Could we, we have a meeting on August twelfth, a town council meeting? Would that be inappropriate? Mandy, do you think we'd keep this on the table if we, I mean, managing the contractor expectations and things like that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, so I guess, Leo, do you want to propose that we table this to the?
Yes, to the, is that our first meeting on the August?
It's our first regular town council.
All right, yeah, I propose we table this to the twelfth of August. Um, and in the meantime, have further discussions with our new town manager and public works director.
Yep.
Second.
Yep. And uh, just any discussion on the tabling motion? Counsel Baker?
Yeah, um, I think at that meeting, I would like a, a recommendation from staff as to whether to move forward or not. I, I think we generally got that, but it seems like we kind of have these opaque discussions and then we don't really get a, a recommendations. I, I like, you know, based on Leo's questions that he has and um, I think I would like a, a firm recommendation as to whether we should move forward or not.
The town man, for the record, the town manager's shaking his head, yes. So he's, yep, okay, good. And Leo, sorry, go ahead.
I guess I'll, I get it. Another, I do have another question, but, but I guess not on this motion.
Okay.
I, I would just say, it seems like every time we've discussed this, we've heard from staff that this is not that, the, the kind of things that we're, we're hoping to explore here really don't seem feasible at all. I mean, if it doesn't do any harm to postpone it, I suppose that's fine, but I, I'm, I'm not really seeing the need because we're not going, I mean, we're not gonna get a better bid than this.
I, I think, I, I agree with you. I think that there, we do have, it's just a unique time. We have new staff. We have a window of time where we have an, you know, something on the table. We have a counselor who's clearly very passionate about it. And I like the opportunity giving, you know, Counselor Kenny an opportunity to work with staff to get his questions answered and perhaps bring us something better. And, but failing something better, you know, we'll have an opportunity to, to accept this bid at our August twelfth meeting when it's still, when it's still available to us.
Just to add on there, Rob, I think to be fair, we, we heard that timing was kind of more the issue of trying to do this. And I think at that time, we were all thinking, because we, we're getting this done this year, we don't have time. And so that, that is a big shift that has changed from the overall responses that it, nothing happens until next year as it is. So that did open up a window, I think.
Timing was part of it, but I think it was also just that, I mean, if staff were to take on any portion of this, there's a ton of other projects that get pushed around. It totally messes, I mean, a project of that scale, I mean, that messes with the workflow for public works in a significant way, messes with WPCF in significant ways. Um, but I mean, again, I'm, I'm, I'm fine if we, we want to postpone this. I'm not, yeah, I, I, I just, I see no reason to fight hard against this.
And Dan, just to be clear, um, we're, we're tabling this till our August meeting, and in the meantime, it's not coming back to a committee meeting. If Counselor Kenny has questions he wants answered, he's gonna work with our town manager or Counselor Baker to make sure those are clearly communicated, and then we're just gonna have it come back at the next council meeting, correct? I'm comfortable with that. I don't feel the need for another committee meeting on this is what I'm trying to say. So.
That's where I'm at too.
That seems reasonable.
Yep. Anyone could always put something on our committee agenda who's a member of the council, then we'll just, you know, move through it, you know. But, all right, although if that is it for discussion, all those in favor of Counselor Kenny's motion to table this item until the August twelfth, you got it right, August twelfth meeting, with the understanding that he'll work with staff to potentially come up with alternatives. Uh, we have to take a roll call. Counsel Berthold, we heard from you on this, right? If you needed anything, I'm sorry, it's hard sometimes to.
Nope, I've just been listening in and, and feel similarly to the view Sarah articulated on this, um, so ready to move ahead.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we'll take a roll call on the tabling motion and we'll start, uh, with Counsel Baker?
In favor.
Counsel Powers?
In favor.
Counsel Kenny?
In favor.
Counsel Berthold?
In favor.
Counsel Marks?
In favor.
Counsel Lawway?
In favor.
And Counsel Demerits in favor, so that's unanimous, seven to nothing. Thanks, staff. Mandy, thank you for joining us, and um, I think that was a good discussion. So thank you.
Thank you, guys.
I have three different agendas in front of me. So, um, order, next up on the agenda under new business is order twenty four one forty six and order authorizing the town manager to purchase one two thousand twenty-three Ford utility police interceptor hybrid from Darling's Bangor Ford of Bangor for the police department in the amount of fifty thousand, six hundred eighty-five dollars, semicolon, plus up to ten thousand, eighty-five dollars paid to Island Tech Services Group of Levant Main. Levant, Levant Main, for equipment and purchase and setup to be drawn from the approved FY twenty-five capital equipment budget. Chief Merrill?
I'm here. Good evening. So tonight I'm seeking approval for the one cruiser that Counsel Demerit um mentioned. Um, it is something that was budgeted in my capital plan, so there's no changes. Um, in the background material, you guys will see that um my recommendation would be to go with the bid that I got from Darling's Ford in Bangor. As some history that was mentioned in that memo, since COVID, it's been a struggle getting cars. Um, and I'll be honest, Ford's doing this thing right now that kind of throws us for a little bit of a wrench where they like to change body styles and stop production on cars and then shut down the line and start them again. So I'm kind of in one of those gray areas where they're changing something significantly enough to where it's getting a little harder to find some cars, especially the way that we like it, the gray. Um, the outfitting that we have with the specific lights that we buy our cars with, um, and the hybrid. So we're fortunate that the bid that I have in front of you guys is a car that's on the lot that I can take delivery for this week, which is good. Um, and the only other bid that I, or the only, only other quote that I got back when I was looking earlier this year for the budget was for Cork Ford in Bangor, but it was a projected cost for a car if they could get it built. So it's completely a speculation and theirs was more expensive. So the, the bid for Darling's was cheaper, um, and it's on the lot and I can take delivery this week. Um, and as mentioned in the background materials, the rest of the money will be used to pay for all the equipment swap over. I gotta do a three-car change to get one out, get one back on and all that. So it's quite a process. So any questions?
Probably a dumb question, but twenty twenty-three because there's no twenty twenty-four's on the lot, obviously.
Yep, actually, this is this is a sister car to the one that we purchased last fiscal year. They were, there were two that were purchased exact, there were two that they had built exactly the same as we like them, and this one's been waiting down there. Nobody else has bought it. So when I called in February, they said that they still had it. So I said, you know, I'm interested.
And that's not the one that we have problems with.
The hybrids?
Yeah, we haven't had problems with any hybrids. I thought, we did have problems recently with a, with one, I thought, a newer one, but that's not it.
We've been having some to be expected, I think, to some degree with us anecdotal electrical issues with hybrids, but I think it's just because to some degree, the technicians are even still catching up with the technology. Um, the, the full push on getting these out to use every day. Again, our use isn't the same as everybody else's use, right? So the way that we use hybrid cars is a little different than the way the general public uses hybrid cars. Um, but nothing that I've seen that's significantly um increased my budget. I can actually say that uh, as part of my budget process this year, I reduced my fuel costs because of the amount of hybrids that we have in the line right now, my fuel consumption's way down significantly, thousands of dollars. So, you know, increasing this would get me all four, if we can purchase this car, our four marked cars that you see out every day will all be hybrid. So I think that the gas savings on that will be very beneficial.
Cool, thanks.
Counsel Baker?
More procedural than anything else. Um, if we've already approved this as the capital, as part of your capital budget. I guess why, is it a dollar threshold or why are we approving this?
Seventy-five hundred dollars or above is the, is the threshold in the, in control manual, internal policies and controls.
All right, not for this discussion, but that seems incredibly low and probably something to update.
If he was, if he was buying a seven thousand dollar blue Ford Escort twenty thirteen with the transmission light comes on once in a while, hint, hint.
Exactly.
You wouldn't even need counsel, you know.
Okay, all right.
I will not be seeking one of those, I can tell you. I will not be seeking something like that. I will be sticking with new cars. They're tried and true and they have warranties.
And this is brand new, right? No money?
This is brand new. It's got less than a hundred miles on it.
Excellent. Any other questions for Chief Merrill? I see that we're getting an update on uh, Main Street safety initiatives and details later in the report, so excited about that.
Sure will.
Good. Move for a vote? Oh, we didn't even do that yet.
Motion.
We got a motion from.
Second.
And a second?
Yeah, we do.
We do. Thank you for keeping us on track. Um, all right, so we're gonna go with Counsel Powers?
I'll, I approve.
Counsel Baker?
Favor.
Counsel Kenny?
In favor.
Counsel Marks?
In favor.
Counsel Berthold?
In favor.
Counsel Lawway?
In favor.
And Counsel Demerits in favor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
That was unanimous, seven, seven to nothing. Next up for us is order twenty four one four seven, order authorizing the town manager to purchase a Whacker BPU three seven fifty reversible compact air from Central Equipment Company of Stillwater Main in the amount of six thousand five hundred sixty dollars with funds drawn from the Equipment Reserve Fund six five six five eight four zero eight nine zero. Uh, Counsel Baker, for your edification, this was, comes to us because it's a transfer, a drawing down of a reserve fund. So I asked that of the interim manager last week too. Okay. Hey, Bill? It's good to see you. A Whacker. Do you tell the folks at home what a Whacker does? Yep.
Could um, you unmute the microphone, please? I'm not able to.
So what happens? You get the new guy?
Yeah.
Well, no, not noon, no.
Not anymore around here.
So yeah, it's uh, it's, it's basically sixteen plus years old. Uh, it's worn out. We can't find parts for it, so.
That's where we're at. Okay. Any other questions? All those in favor? Uh, nope, sorry. Roll call vote. We'll start with Counsel Powers.
I, um, do we have to put this? I'm moving it.
And I'm second.
Bill moved.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Um, a little later than usual, but um, all right, I apologize. Counsel Powers?
I approve.
Counsel Baker?
Approved.
Approved.
Counselor Kenny?
In favor.
Counselor Marks?
In favor.
Counselor Bertholz?
Approve.
Counselor Larway?
In favor.
Counselor Demerit's in favor. Thank you for that. Yep. All right. Next, I need a motion on order 24148. Good, so moved, right? I get, I gotta read it, I guess. Order approving ordinance amendments to the Town of Orno Code of Ordinances, Chapter 28, Personnel, Article 6, Working Environment, Section 2891, adding a section, section D, potential liability claims of harassment or discrimination. Can I get an order to put this on the table?
Okay, seconded.
Order moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Okay, we'll take a roll call. We've had, you know, for folks at home, we've had several, we've had a couple of different public hearings on this, several committee discussions, worked with the town attorney, worked with the insurance company. There's been, been a lot of work that's gone into this. So with that, we'll take, take a vote and we'll start with Counselor Powers.
In favor.
Counselor Baker?
In favor.
Counselor Kenny?
In favor.
Counselor Marks?
In favor.
Counselor Bertholz?
In favor.
Counselor Larway?
In favor.
Counselor Demerit's in favor, so that's unanimous. Thank you, everybody. Good work. And thank you to all the counselors who've spent time and the citizens who've given us good input on this and made it a better, a better proposal. And thank you. Okay, order 24149, order adopting the FY25 community building mini grant guidelines and procedures. I think we start, well, let's get a motion. Thank you, Matt, just bang it out. Don't even wait. Get a second?
Second.
Second, moved and seconded. So we have both. I wanted to thank Counselor Baker for putting together a proposal for us to, do you want to talk us through it a little bit? Jacob?
Yeah, certainly. So this is actually something that I worked with Sarah on as well, since this is her, this was her baby last year and it was developed based on a lot of the conversations we've had just in my short time on the council about, you know, how, how do we, you know, judge these applications that are coming to us? So I thought it'd be helpful to have some, you know, additional framework. So kind of, I took what some of the items that we were already conceptually doing and then added a couple more, what I think would be, you know, requirements, things that we should consider. But then also at Dan's urging, I talked to Cornell, who talked to staff and adding some kind of administrative procedural items as well. And the thought process would be that this would live on the website where we currently talk about, you know, the importance of the mini grant program and that way, you know, anybody applying has very clear standards as to, you know, this is what we're looking for when we, you know, decide whether or not to approve them. So the first document, these are virtually the same documents. The first one entitled V2 is essentially a memo thoughts that I put together, submitted for the agenda, but then Dan rightly suggested that it be, you know, drafted into an actual order so that, you know, staff knows exactly what we're recommending. So that is what the Community Building Grants mini page is. It is. So just a couple highlights and again, you know, this can be up for discussion, but I've talked to, you know, Sarah a lot about this and, and so I, you know, anything I guess can be discussion, but I propose we limit grants to 750. Last year was $1,000, but given our reduction in budget, I think 750 is more, is a better figure and will allow us to serve more groups. And so, you know, for comparison, last year, the average grant size was 980 bucks. Also, we're looking to propose a total project size ceiling or threshold. And really, the point of this is to ensure that these grants are serving their purpose and serving their mission, which is to encourage community members to get involved and to sponsor events or activities that wouldn't normally be done for a variety of reasons. So the, the point of the dollar threshold is, is just to ensure that we're not donating funds to projects that, that would get done with or without our funding. Now, Counselor Marks had a thought that, you know, maybe we make an exception so that, you know, if they finally, if they need 750 to get them across the threshold, perhaps we could consider that, but that, you know, is open for discussion. One of the conversations ahead with Cornell is limiting the submissions to a quarterly or some type of, you know, timed basis. So last year, how it seemed to work, and again, you know, I'm new, is that, you know, we just funded the first, we, we funded the first projects that came to us. Once we hit the cap, then we quit funding. This will allow us, if we take it just on a quarterly bump or, you know, bi-monthly basis to, you know, really put projects, you know, look at projects together and figure out which ones make the most sense. Instead of, again, just funding or just voting on the first 700 or $7,500 that come to us. I would like to see, you know, a more itemized budget. I'm happy to, you know, put something together for consideration, nothing of any great level of detail, but, you know, I think knowing where the funds are going to be spent is important to me. Other piece is that grantees must agree to promote their projects as widely as possible throughout town. And the reason for this is one of the main purposes of this program is to spurn community engagement, is to get, you know, town working with citizens and these events aren't successful if nobody knows about them. So if you're going to receive grant funds, you've got to also agree to work with the town to promote your event and to get as many people involved as possible. After the fact, report is required. Again, like the budget, I don't want it to be itemized. I, I, I don't want to make this too onerous, but I, I would like, you know, a, a general accounting of how the funds are going to be spent. Some, the procedural administrative items that, that staff came up with, application through the town's website. Grantees must complete a W9, submit an invoice for payment, and then any tax liability will be the sole responsibility of the grantee. And we can't offer tax advice. Just some things for discussion that, you know, came up last year is should private businesses be disqualified? And then yeah, that's, that, that was the biggest thing, because that seemed to be a discussion that came up a lot. So with that, I would open up for discussion or motion or whatever procedurally needs to happen.
Okay, Counselor Marks? Dog, just, so this, as drafted, it doesn't include a prohibition on private businesses, right?
It does not.
Okay. I'm indifferent on that. If it's a great idea and we like it and it's a private business, I guess I'm leave it up to our judgment in the moment.
I would agree, yeah.
I, I think I, I feel opposite of, just, I, I feel like when it's commerce involved and it's giving advantage to one business in the community, that feels a little off to me. And that's what, I think, last year, what started my not concerns, but kind of all bets are off with this and just kind of whoever comes, we approve it was when we, when they fundraised for paying for the school for the inside farmer's market and love farmer's market. It's a great asset and it's a great thing in the community, but those people, they're all vendors and they're all, and it was like, they're all paying their way, just like our vendors downtown are paying their vitulars license and all that stuff. So I, I'm a little squirmy about allowing businesses to also tap into refunds when I just think that creates a little bit of a issue, could create a little bit of an issue. So I, I lean towards not going for that. And just want to throw out there one thought on the, on the ceiling was maybe and at first I was thinking, no, there shouldn't be, but as you were talking, I actually think, I was thinking maybe like 4X of what they're if they're like 4X of what the whole, what they're asking for. So if they're asking for 750, it's a three grand is what they need to do the project, because then, then it's a significant, we're still a significant, you know, a quarter is a significant amount and so, and it's not, we've got a $50,000 project and here's your 750. So that's just kind of, just, just came to me, Jake. I do have one more question or thought. Repeat askers for the same event. Do we have any thoughts on that? So we had a host of people do it this year. And I don't, I mean, in my mind, at some point, I suppose, I feel like I heard that this is sort of seed money to make something happen and grow and get them going. And then is that, did I just make that up? I could have. But in my mind, that was part of what, what it was. So if we say, okay, well, here's your seed money, go do it. Oh, here's your seed money, again, go do it. And, you know, so should we consider like, maybe, maybe that's a B round or something like that, if, you know, if we've got other people that are new asking, I don't know, just a thought.
Leo, how would you write that? Would you write that to say for the same event or by the same applicant? Because someone could apply for a totally different event and be the same applicant.
I'm thinking event. I mean, I think I, I would welcome like, hey, we tried this and now we want to try this. I think that's, that's different than doing the same thing over again and not having it like begin, begin being self-sustaining.
I just, I have a couple of things, but just in response, by the way, mostly thank you to Jacob because he's crediting me, but I did very little work on this. Jacob did this. I just looked at a couple of things and shared some experiences I had from having been here a little bit before Jacob came on board. So all credit to Jacob. And, you know, Leo, for the business one, we had at least three events that I can think of where local businesses applied for the grant. And I think with Jacob's new additions of making it clear that we need an actual itemized accounting of where things are going, I feel much more comfortable with that. It was harder for me when there was, some businesses provided that anyway, but some didn't. It was just sort of a blanket, this much money to run the whole event with nothing broken out. And for me, I think some of those events were pretty dynamic for the community and I guess I wouldn't want to exclude them entirely from consideration, but I'm very flexible on that. If the rest of council wants to, I don't care. I have only one thing that I actually care a little bit passionately about on the procedures or policies here, whatever it is, as written up. And that one is the, one about the quarterly submissions. I fully support the idea that we don't want to give out all the grant money in the first couple of months of the year. And I also know that some of our most dynamic events, people had the idea like six weeks before the event. And if this had been in place, they would never have been able to get the money to do their event. So I came with, just this afternoon, I jotted down some alternate language that I think would accomplish the goal of not spending all the money, but wouldn't require applications to only be assessed at a quarterly basis. I wrote, submissions will be accepted on a rolling basis, but council will not expend more than 2,000 a quarter. Therefore, it is in applicant's best interest to apply as close to the start of each quarter if possible. Quarters begin on July 1st, October 1st, January 1st, and April 1st. So I would like to put that forward just for council to consider. I think it meets the goal Jacob stated and it would not eliminate some of our coolest events. People tend to think of things that aren't that many months away. When it's a volunteer kind of a gig, they tend to seem to think about two months ahead on max, from what I saw.
No, I think that gets the spirit, so.
No, perfect.
You have any concerns that if we don't spend, if we, if we only get one application in the first quarter and then, there's got to be a way to expend it as we go, right?
So then just change it to, if it's in the fourth quarter, all remaining funds may be spent, but something to that.
Would that work if we added a sentence like that, Dan, to say in the fourth quarter, you know, we may exceed the $2,000 limit to expend remaining funds if we so choose. We could also just roll them back into the budget and save them for the next year.
Well, I was thinking also, not just waiting until the fourth quarter, but any previous quarters not spent can be going forward.
Okay.
In case, you know, we get a big Q3 or something like that.
I, I know exactly what you're talking, what you want to say. I can't put it in 10 words or less. So maybe the, maybe the thing to do is take this language back and bring it back for the next meeting and vote on it in the next meeting, because there's a couple of these things are a little I'm, I'm happy to vote on it now if we think we can get to it and spend another 15 minutes on the language, but if we get to the what do you think, Jacob?
Yeah, if we're gonna have another meeting next week, which I'll table that for a second, then yeah, that's fine. I can do that.
I guess the other thing that I had jotted a note about, I'm not quite as passionate about, but I just wondered if we could add some statement near the end where it talks about grantees must complete a W9 with the town and submit an invoice for payment. That's been true all year. That's what folks have been doing. And I think it's a great procedure. I just know that those terms are not scary to staff who know what a W9 is, but they tend to scare volunteers. I had a couple of volunteers say, I don't even know what a W9 is. How do I do this? So I don't know if we can just add a sentence which says, you know, these are one-page forms and staff will, you know.
Or can we just say something to the extent of applicants will work with staff to fill out all required paperwork, something to that.
I don't mind if the paperwork's listed as W9, but just applicants will work with staff to fill out a W9 would work fine. I just don't want people to be scared. They hear any term that sounds like a tax anything and they picture a 200-page booklet as opposed to the one-page form that the W9 actually is.
Who would be the specific staff that they would have to work with on that, just out of curiosity? Who would we envision?
Dude. Guys, yeah.
When you've been here a day, who would that be?
Yeah. This wasn't the first thing we talked about today with these mini grants?
Why don't, why don't we leave that till the next meeting? We'll have a more definitive answer, because I'd like to talk about what staff are doing what a little bit more. So I think we just kind of know that staff will make sure it's handled.
And I throw that up just to continue to be cognizant of the requirements that we continue to put. And I realize this happened, this has happened this year and it's maybe 10 times, but I guess it's like, it's like hiring 10, not exactly, but making sure those forms get filled out 10 times is still an effort and it's, it's staff effort. So I just want to continue to be cognizant of, of the load that we continue to put on staff.
So, okay, any other discussion? So Counselor Baker, do you feel like you have, you can bring something back for us? And I guess then it would be appropriate to get a motion to table this to our net, we don't, we haven't made our July 15 meeting a special council meeting. Can we table this till the end of the new business? Or do we, what we want to do, Shelley, is we want to, we want a chance to bring this back and vote on it next week. We still haven't made next week a special council meeting yet. We're gonna do that in about two items from now. So should we just table it to the the July 15 meeting? Without, we don't, no one, okay, why don't we do that? A motion to table?
Yes, but I just want to, I want to really quick summarize what I believe I heard. So come up with some type of language about, you know, when applications will be received, so pertaining to a dollar amount, but then that dollar amount rolling into the next quarter. Toning down or finding the W9 requirement. And then also to Leo's point, instead of putting a dollar amount for the projects, put it to as a multiple of project costs.
Yep. I think he said four times, but that makes sense to me, but yeah.
Okay. And did I understand everything correctly?
Perfect. Where'd we leave it on the business? We, we agreed that we're okay with kind of the census that we're all right with.
Yeah, I agree, I agree, yeah. Sarah's point is taken that having a little more accounting would, would help with that probably, so that's fine.
All right, good. And so we'll get a, entertain a motion to table this to councils, I guess, July 15 meeting, but I'm not the motioner, so I guess we could make it one.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Moved and seconded. And we're gonna go with Counselor Powers.
In favor.
Counselor Baker?
Favor.
Counselor Kenny?
In favor.
Counselor Bertholz?
In favor.
Counselor Larway?
In favor.
Counselor Demerit? Counsel is in favor and Counselor Marks.
In favor.
Sorry, I was just messing with Sarah. Okay, I appreciate how we had this discussion. We had an opportunity to potentially get it across the goal line, but also to learn and discuss and bring it back to the next meeting. So I like that. So thank you for that. All right, are we at the new business?
You're going back to your current items, which would be 24143.
Okay. All right, we pulled 24143, order confirming the town manager's appointment of Patrick Esty as a health officer, filling an unexpired three-year term until April 2027. Can I have a motion to put that on the table?
So moved, second.
Moved and seconded. Counselor Kenny, I think you were the one that asked to discuss this.
Yeah, I just don't know anything about it and I'm curious, do we have, is he the current health inspector? Health officer?
No, he's not the current health officer. Your health officer was your fire chief and this is filling that vacated position.
Until April 2027?
And yes, that was, that was the term that was recommended.
And I asked also because, yeah, again, I, I I recall from the budget meetings that we have a I recall from the budget meetings that we have a lot of stuff being processed out of that office currently. I have no idea what the health officer does, but I can't believe that Patrick Estes has spare time from code. Am I, don't tell me.
We're going to hear from Mitch Stone on this?
I might be able to help a little bit. So currently under the system that is in place, although the fire chief is the health officer, all of the health pieces go through our code officer anyways. These would include like mold, rats, things like that. He's dealing with them already. He was a code officer in his previous position in Brewer, I mean, a health, a, the health officer in Brewer. So he's done this before. So it doesn't necessarily, he's involved in all of the things that are happening anyways, currently, was currently. So adding this title doesn't really change much for him.
Okay. So again, not knowing what a health officer does, so it sounds like it's more related to building health and stuff like that.
It is a number of things. It's not just that, but, um, but I think in the interim of not having a fire, fire chief and not knowing what that position looks like, I think the idea is putting him in place until if there is another suitable person to fill that role down the line, um, we would certainly could look at that and, and reappoint somebody else. But in the interim, um, I think the discussions were and, and the recommendation from our fire chief was to have Pat step in during this time.
All right.
Yep. Any other discussion?
Thank you.
Thanks, Mitch. All right. Uh, so on the table, we'll take a, we'll take a vote on order 24, 143 confirming Pat Estes per the town manager's appointment as the health officer. Council Baker.
Approved.
Council Powers.
In favor.
Council Kenny.
In favor.
Council Mark's.
In favor.
Council Bertholz.
In favor.
Council Larway.
In favor.
And Council DeMarette is in favor. Uh, it's a passage unanimously. So thank you. Yeah. Yeah, I got that. I talked to her today. Thank you. Order 24, 144, order changing the July 15th council committee meeting to a special council meeting. Council Baker had some questions about this. I think it aligns well with Clint Deschamps' update, town manager update, and some suggestions he has for us to think about. So Council Baker, you want to?
Yeah, no, I, I, I get this is not very efficient, but I'm, I'll vote for this. Um, I just wanted to put this out into the public realm that I, I think we need some, some to put together some concrete procedures or at least policies, ways of, of, of doing things to what actually, you know, constitutes the need for a special meeting. Because I, I understand budget at town manager hiring, we had a lot, but it seems like we still have a lot of, of special meetings. And if I can't keep track of which meetings we vote on things and which meetings we don't, it's really hard for the public to be able to keep track of all that.
It sounds Clint, like you've been pitched a softball right down the middle of the plate. If you want to, you want to maybe jump in with what you were going to talk about.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you. That's a lot of what I heard. I mean, I had a little bit of something I wanted to share with the, and I'll save a lot of that. But I mean, I think that's the general consensus of staff and council and the residents that even reached out on various topics in the, in the interim of me starting, but starting without starting. There's a schedule and structure issue that's just become evident, especially, and it started right in the interview process, that full day. And you could just see it over and over and over again. And having a chance to step away, digest everything and then following up, coming here in person for a couple of days before I started and just being in and around the community, getting some nice emails. Schedule and structure keep coming up. And I think that's why I kind of reached out to the chair and the vice chair and said, can, during the agenda setting, can we make that a meeting? I'd like to bring this forward. I have a chance to do some stuff in the next week. And I think this is just a chance to not hesitate, but use a good structure to set it in process, put it in place, follow the process through to the end. And then when we're all done, we'll have more, more to go with. So I'm right on the same page. Exactly.
So I, yeah, I, I would say I've asked for the, the special meeting for next week because it gives us a chance to, if, if Clint comes back to us with, you know, a charge to, we have a special committee on nominations, procedures, policies, and ideally Clint will come back to us with some things that he's learned and, and, uh, and setting up a, a charge to that committee to, to take a look at our, our schedules and, you know, formulate the structure of our meeting. So we meet less often, but have more, you know, more opportunities to move things like, you know, like we did tonight. We moved some things that, um, in a way that I think is more efficient. So Council Marks.
Yeah, I just want to second that. From everything I've heard from all of counselors and myself and the public, I don't get to ask staff, but I can't imagine they like having to be here at quite this many meetings all the time either. So yeah, I'm hoping, I don't know. I was told to bring ideas of, um, for the nominations, evaluations and policy committee, you know, to council next week. And I'm hoping that council might charge that as the first task for that committee to work with staff. And I'm hoping Clint might appoint some staff to come work with us on that as a group collaboratively, to come up with a different structure for how we do our meetings and schedule them. So I'm hopeful on that also. And I think Clint will take it from here and council will get to talk about this, I guess, next week on the charge for that committee and whether that's something you want to charge us to work on.
And yeah, particularly mindful of the, the staff element. I know it's new, like Clint's first day. But these meetings are, it's not just the time that we get Mitch to stay here until seven o'clock with us and Shelley when she, you know, it's just, it's the, all the work that goes into making these meetings successful. And to the extent that we can, I think those are, the past couple of weeks, we've been on an every other week schedule. And I think all of us probably think it's, it's refreshing. So like a, like a, like a day of tubing in the Stillwater, in the beautiful Stillwater River here in Orno, Maine. So.
Every other week. So let's vote to do one two weeks in a row. Perfect.
Well, ironic as it may be, but we had a meeting on the books anyway. So we're gonna, yeah. All right. So can we get a, um, a motion on order 24? Did we get one already? No, damn.
So moved.
Matt, you're slipping.
Second.
All right. Okay. This is an order changing the July 15th council committee meeting, which was already scheduled to a special council meeting. So if something comes up that we want to vote on, we have an opportunity to vote on it. So Councilor Powers.
In favor.
Council Baker.
In favor.
Council Kenny.
In favor.
Council Mark's.
In favor.
Council Bertholz.
In favor.
I think I heard it in favor.
In favor.
Okay, thank you. Council Larway.
In favor.
And Council DeMarette's in favor. That's unanimous vote. That's everything under new business and the consent items that we pulled off. Now we have the town manager's report and we're going to get Clint Deschamps, our town manager. Can we get a pool update?
That button. We got some items with the staff. I guess if I could just start with my first update and kind of the segue with where we just started a little bit. I'll kind of maybe wrap it up a little bit, but my first official manager's update. So, uh, you know, a big day of firsts all day long today. Uh, enjoyed them all. Uh, I wanted to do what a few of you've all done. And I want to say a few things, just some thanks to, to a lot of people. You know, Cornell, I want to thank you for all your time and effort to keep the operation of the town going so smoothly. You and I and a few others know how well that a town manager's job is a challenge in and of itself. And to take it on as an interim with an interim schedule, but still have the same expectations and output. It was a great job. So thank you for doing that for this community. And I'm, it's an honor to come in and continue that from you. To the residents. And again, I also wanted to just share a thank you to them. To their help during our process to build a path forward for the success of a new manager. You took on one of the most impressive processes I've ever seen. The residents really engaged. I've continued to hear from them in the time that I've started and some of them, and I'm looking forward to even more. It was very appreciated in everything you've done in that process. To the council, I want to thank you. It's never easy recruiting a new manager. And in addition to working as a board with so many unknowns. You've done that with, with your time and dedication to this community. So you've done an awful lot in the past seven to nine months. And I'll, I'll use Leo's. I'm not exactly sure how long it has been, but it's been a while, but seven to nine months sound rare. And you know, and last but not least, and I want to, I want to say the staff, you're the glue that holds this town together. And your, and your services on a day-to-day basis don't go unnoticed. The town's needs never changed in that entire process. And with all the vacancies and transitions, you just never missed a beat while leading them forward. And the residents probably owe you a thank you as well. And I know that it's in their hearts and minds as they see you and interact with you every day. I've met many of you. Um, I look forward to more meetings with those of you I've met and I'm quite a few more I haven't met. So I'm looking forward to all those. And, and, and in that, um, it's going to be such an honor to work with you as we chip away on the needs of the community of Orno and, and, and build on the past success of a wonderful town. As I was, I was going to segue with a little bit of that, you know, a bigger part of what I've heard is just how much we got to work on the, your ability to change things. And so often managers are identified for their ability to communicate and speak to the public. And I'm hoping that I can introduce a new quality or another quality, or maybe accentuate a quality that's been there. But that's the ability to listen and to bring that all together in a common goal and a common vision. Um, I think, you know, listening skills is something that we all know has to be there, but sometimes we overlook it for the eloquent speaker or the eloquent presentation. Those are only eloquent if you've listened well to the people and what they've shared with you in that process. So again, and continue that, you know, the scheduling structure, that's what I'd heard during coming here, thought more and heard since. So thank you for putting July 15th as a, uh, and I'm tweaking my presentation here, but that'll be a good one. Hopefully I can bring that forward with some good recommendations and maybe an order where we can kick that over to a committee and start that process. So again, thank you for everything you've done. That's my, my one little report there. Um, I do also want to do a quick update. The fires chief's position closes on Wednesday. We've had a lot of great applications coming in. We'll be working with staff some on how we're going to move that process forward. But I want to just give you a quick update that there's been a lot of, lot of applications come in for that. A great pool to work from and, and the town should be happy to have that quality of a pool to start with. That being said, you also have some other presentations and I know you want some updates from staff. So I'll kick it back to you to maybe bring up some staff on the four items that were on the agenda.
Sure. Um, I guess we were going to hear about the, the pool. And I saw a social media post and so thank you for that as well, a couple of days ago.
Megan Mazzella, Parks and Recreation Director. Thank you, Council Kenny, for your, for your kind words at the beginning of the night. Although I am the one that is managing the project and coming forth to you with the information, it has been really a team effort with my department and the facilities department. So I'm very grateful to have them just as involved in a lot of aspects. We, in terms of where the pool is construction wise, we are on some of the last steps here. There is some electrical work that needs to be done and that needs to be inspected. And, um, that doesn't have a lot of really big fun pictures, like some of the construction you've seen. That's a lot of more minor wires and, and things to make sure that the gutter systems are connected properly and grounded properly. After that, we will be able to pour the concrete and that will be done internally with the staff we have here and from our facilities department. And that, the electric needs to happen first before we do the concrete. That cannot happen simultaneously. But as the concrete is being poured, there will be moments where the Parks and Rec Department will be able to start filling it with water. So some of these things will be able to be done simultaneously as we get a little bit farther. We are very confident that we will be open the week of the 15th. I say the week, um, as we're not quite ready to nail down a date, but I know the public is so eager and I know I'm so eager. And I know our lifeguarding staff are so eager, uh, to get things open. So it's probably not going to be Monday, but maybe Wednesday, maybe Friday. Obviously if there's a rainy day, concrete, you know, uh, those two things don't mix well. So, uh, but really positive stuff. We will be open this summer. And I can't stress how kind of amazing this all came together. We worked really hard to get it to where it is today, to get the contractors in place as quickly as we did for the unexpected things that we did encounter at the beginning of this project. It's finally coming together in just a few, few days here, hopefully. So very, very excited. We do have a full lifeguard staff, which is also amazing that, uh, all of them, all of the lifeguard staff are young adults and teenagers in this community that have lifeguard certifications. So this will allow our pool to be open every single day, once it's open. So that's Monday through Sunday, uh, from noon to seven daily. We will be bringing the snack shack back, which I know is something exciting, uh, that has been gone for the past couple of years. The just simple things, ice cream cones and freezy pops and things. All a dollar or less. So I restructured those prices in mind as I know a lot of kiddos might leave their house for $5 in that pocket and that will get them entrance to the pool and a snack as well. So that was kind of my mentality of keeping those, uh, pretty low in terms of that. I also adjusted the seasonal pool pass rates. Given that the season is a little bit shorter, I've left those on the website, both the previous costs and the costs of this year. So that way people can see that it has been adjusted. And when we do have a full pool season, it won't be confusing to go back to the original prices. So the prices this year will be for a single person who is a resident, $30. For a family who are residents, it will be $60. For non-residents, a single person will be $60 and a family of non-residents will be 120. The daily pool rates of $3 and $6 for residents and non-residents will remain the same.
That's fabulous. Um, do we have any questions for, other than appreciate, expressions of appreciation for how this has been managed and how fast the staff have, have taken care of this?
Just particularly psyched that it's open seven days a week. That's awesome. I, I don't, I think it's, I don't know when it, well, I don't think it was last year. I think it's been a while. So that's, I think that's a huge accomplishment.
I think the last time was probably about 2018, based on some records, 2018, 2019, in that range.
That's awesome. Well done. Thank you.
I, I saw you training the stat, the lifeguards, right? You had a meeting. I, I was riding by on my bike and I took every ounce of restraint that I possibly have, not to, not to ride down and, tease you or do something, you know, like I, you know, like something that would make Jacob roll his eyes. I didn't do it, but.
I'm not really surprised you didn't.
It really was hard for me.
Pinned on self-control.
Yeah. I'm growing. So anyway, thank you very much for, for all the good work on that. And we're excited. So. Speaking of more good work, um, Bill, you have some, I wanted to thank Bill, Council Baker and I were on Forest Avenue and owing primarily to our presence, Cornell, nobody sped the whole time we were on the street. As we were, it didn't hurt that Chief Merrill was there with a squad car as well, but Bill, can you give us an update on, on your thoughts for the Forest Avenue speed table?
Sure. As we did the walkthrough, we did change one table. We moved one back closer to Tool Lane after talking to the public. We went by with the, with the company, we did the engineering company, but we were able to have some flexibility. So we moved that back. Other than that, we're ready to go. Right now we're looking at the second week of August. We've already sunk in two pylons for the RF, what do they call them? The RRFPs, reflective, the, the crosswalks. So we've already sunk two. We're going to sink another two this week. We're hoping to get those in and hopefully get the company in to get those actually put up ahead of time and get them up and running. So, but other than that, the other, other thing with that is we looked at it, had a lot of complaints on the ones that we've already installed. They're pretty aggressive. Uh, I went on MDOT, uh, they require, they recommend a 22 foot. We have an 18 foot as far as length. So we're going to fix those. Not sure those are going to get fixed this year. But the new ones going in will be a six foot to a 10 foot to another six foot. Be a little less of a, you're not going to see shit you hit. I went over the other day with my Mustang at the speed and I was like, yeah, yeah, no, that's way too aggressive.
Use a rental if you're going to test it.
Yeah. Yeah. No, that's not around. My wife thinks it. Yeah. I use, uh, but other than that, uh, walkthrough went really good. I think the townspeople were pretty happy with, you know, the outcome of it. Um, and that's pretty much it.
It, it was, um, any, any other questions for, I, I thought it was an excellent example of engagement. And I know that that's a, a neighborhood that's really, uh, has, has wanted to be heard on this. And I think that the, that the response has been really great and, and that walkthrough was fantastic. We literally were able to talk about the sighting of the, of one of the speed tables. And we literally, one of the citizens moved the cone, you know, we moved the cones together where it was going to go. And it, it led to, uh, I think a lot of good feelings about responsiveness and folks are going to be delighted to hear it's the second week of August. And I tell people, you know, stuff happens in public works. And if it's, but because we're looking at the second week of August, that leaves a lot of construction time to get it done. If, you know, there's some unforeseen emergency or something like that.
Yeah, right now we're up on Charles Street, uh, working with a, working with another contractor, putting that in. And right now it's going good, but so we're, we're, we're trying to get things moved ahead, you know, a little bit by a little bit. So like I said, we'll put the other two bases in. The other thing we had a lot of questions on, uh, was the signs, unable to see the signs as they come in. So I did a little research and for about 2,200 bucks, I think we can put one at the front and one at the end that are lit and they're solar. They're nowhere near as massive as what we're going to do with the cross. and they're solar. They're nowhere near as massive as what we're gonna do with the crosswalk signs. So it's a pretty good alternative. I talked to Chief Merrill and I've talked about it. Things are pretty good idea. So we'll do another walkthrough and Clint gets, you know, get Clint maybe sometime this week and give him a walkthrough and show him what we're looking at.
At the speed tables that are there now?
Well, that's like, uh, what they call it sign pollution on that road.
Yeah.
I mean, you get down that road, it's a sign, 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 sign. So what I like to do is just at the very front and at the, I call it the back as you're coming in to basically say, speed tables. What lit lit in the corner, like four corners are lit, so you can actually see something as you're coming into it, especially coming off the overpass. That can be, you know, at night, it just, you just don't see the sign.
Yeah.
Believe it or not. But so that's one of the things, one of the other things we're looking at as well.
Yep.
Pretty cheap fix.
Great.
Uh, Bill, I've had a, I've had a um, a resident, actually resident ask, inquire or express concern with elderly parents asking about response time for emergency vehicles with with all the new speed bumps. And I don't think it's everything, anything we've really had any dialogue about here.
One of, Brian's here tonight, but I think one of the biggest things was because the new, the speed tables they just put in, that put in ahead of time are very aggressive. So in other words, you don't have much of a, it's like there and you're at the ten foot. Uh, that's an eighteen foot spread. So once we do that, I don't know, Brian ought to speak to the response time. But I think once we do that, it'll help. Was it Herman? Herman actually broke the tanker coming to a rescue or coming down here on a mutual aid call.
It on our speed bump?
On our speed bump.
And are we, do we end up being liable for that sort of thing, I wonder, or?
No, they probably ate it.
But I guess that's that's only part of that. I mean, that's kind of
Yeah. But I I think, um, as we looked at it,
Heard it last week at the walkthrough. Yeah.
As we looked at, if we go to the twenty-two, it would remind you a lot of being out on Park Street. There's set up a little different. They have a very small incline. But the back end is much longer, but it's still a twenty, that's still considered a twenty-two foot uh speed pa- speed table. So I think once we swing out to the twenty, the twenty-two feet, give you the extra sweep on the sides, I think that'll make a world of difference. Brian?
I mean, I I have thought about being, not being in the back of an ambulance on on the ones that are there now and just think you would get, you almost, you would get racked almost no matter how fast they're going.
We're gonna attempt to fix those this year. We gotta grind them out, just the sides and and feather them back out. We're gonna attempt to fix them. I'm just not sure if we're gonna get to it, but the new ones going in will be definitely the twenty-two foot.
Alright, thanks. Yeah, I just, I I wanted to share that because again, somebody I know with an elderly parent out there had that concern. It seems like it's a, sounds like it's a pretty legit concern. So I don't know. Spread it, making it bigger hopefully helps.
Oh, it, trust me, it does.
Yeah, I'm sure.
It really does.
Yep.
Thank you.
We'll test it with Bill's Mustang apparently when we get the
Yeah, it wasn't good at thirty-five, so my wife told me not to do it.
And we're also gonna get, there's also gonna be another speed sign coming into town, cause the one we have now on Forest Avenue going is out of going out of town. So there's gonna be another, I I understand there'll be another speed sign. I'm seeing a nod of yes in the back of the room.
Right, we're gonna, we're gonna be working, uh, Chief Merrill and I are gonna work close. We're gonna put two more posts up there. Um, so he can hang what he needs to hang. We're gonna take a trip over either tomorrow or the next day and and get an exact location.
Yep.
And the guys will put it in.
And and this will be something for, I mean, for just staff's awareness and community's awareness and council's awareness, you know, this is you know, we'll look to get those updates back in terms of, you know, what are we seeing from the data? Is it working? Is it not working? There's no solution, you know, there's no like, this is, we're done, right? I mean, to the extent that there are safety concerns, whether it's for drivers or for I mean, we can learn from what we're doing and improve. And I think that's a, that communication will be really helpful and the data. So thank you for your great work on this. Thank you for everybody's participation. So
You're welcome.
Anything else? Great. And we had, um, since we're buying new police cruisers, where are they going, right? Another good report from staff, Chief Merrill?
I can tell you where the shiny new police car is going.
Yeah.
Main Street. Main Street is where they've been spending a lot of time. So history, right? We'll go back to go forward at the, it was about the end of March, April, correct? I believe um it it was brought to our attention that we were having some concerns um from a bus driver and some other people. We were getting feedback about having issues with people passing stop school buses. So um, I came to you and I said that I can do this, which at the time, as I remember it, it was forty-eight details. It was supposed to be four, four hour four, four hour details a week. Everybody's tracking with that. So it would be sixteen details a month for um April, May and June, which would have was, which was the remainder of the fiscal year. Um, and as a result of that, um, staff was able to complete forty-six of those forty-eight details, which I think is fantastic on top of everything else that they did. Um, during that time, they stopped three hundred and sixty-five cars, which is a pile of cars in the context of traffic enforcement from basically the fire ramp to Kelly Road, three hundred and sixty-five cars were stopped in a twelve week period. That's a lot of blue, blue and red lights. I don't know if you guys have been seeing it. I feel like I've been hearing at meetings that they've been seeing them a lot. Um, so good. Um, I, that is as good as I could have expected for our staff and I'm very proud of what they did and the amount of stops that they were able to conduct. Um, another good news that I'm sure um you guys will be happy to hear. Uh, when I looked this morning at Trio and I called Zach to confirm, I must have been using a high number when I was budgeting, which is good, I guess. Um, my final tally is five thousand three hundred and ninety-seven dollars and ninety-seven cents is what that cost for forty-six details. So just a shade under fifty-four hundred dollars got us all that enforcement action. Um, and anecdotally, I know that um Ed Leskey has heard from the bus driver who had spoken to us. Um, I believe that we got expressed thanks, that there was an improvement in um the issues. Um, I will say, when I went back and looked at the numbers again today, even in May and June and given June, you only a couple of weeks left in school, correct? Uh, we didn't have any violations in June and we had, while people were doing um the details in May, we had three violations. So that's pretty good. We had three alone in April. So, you know, I think that it it's working and we're still working with, I gotta close the loop with both Mitch and Bill, but we're still working on getting the uh school bus sign on Stillwater Avenue that we talked about. We talked about doing a s- a sign right at the town line that says all lanes must stop for a bus stop. It was something that we'd heard. Farmington had a sign for it. I've spoken to them. Um, and it was just a matter of us getting the practicality of getting the sign ordered and installed. So um, any questions on that? Great success from my perspective. Huge thanks to my staff. They were great. They all stepped up and really, really did an excellent job.
Thank you, Chief Merrill. And yes, we we live on Main Street and we've noticed and thank you so much for all that work. I did have one question. I know that you got the new printers into um the police cruisers. Has that helped um streamline anything or was it just a necessary like with? Is it, is it, I know it takes a lot of time to stop that many people. I was just wondering if that will help in any way or or are they working as advertised, I guess?
I would say we're early. It's only been a couple of weeks for us. Um, we just rolled the system out. This is probably only week two, two or three. So as I spoke about when we asked for the printers, um, effective last week, effective July one, that new law went in place that mandates us to report our traffic stop data to the Attorney General's Office. So fortunately, the plan worked out where I wanted to get it to staff where we have all the printers in and we could use this new online reporting system a little ahead of when that July, you know, mandate started. Um, so I I have been talking to staff a little bit um and getting their feedback and i- it's just like any new technology system, right? They're kind of learning the nuances. Um, a lot of staff, especially the staff that has done traffic stops a specific way before, it was all paper. So they're very used to that way of doing it. So to some degree, I don't know that it's quicker now because we're we're adjusting. I I'm not against technology. I think technology is great and this system is a very beneficial system for us. It's just, it's gonna take us a little bit of an adjustment period to rework the way that we do our traffic stops and make them what they used to be, cause they've been doing them for some of them ten or fifteen years one way and now I'm telling them to do it this way and they're like, huh.
Well, thanks. I know sometimes like it doesn't help time wise, but thank you for getting that up and I just was curious.
Yes, they're they're, they will definitely help us when we have to do our quarterly reporting. It'll be a huge asset for us, you know, specifically with uh admin staff. We won't have to hand pull that data and get it to the Attorney General's Office. We're automatically compliant, so they will definitely be useful to us. Anything else?
Anybody have anything else for, I just wanted to say my thanks. I mean, you were incredibly responsive when we brought you that, the bus, the concerns from the bus driver and the family. And I know we've got more coming on the Orno Stops Initiative and and things like that. So um, it's visible, people are noticing and that's what you you'd wanna have from from a municipality. So thank you very much for what you've been doing and your entire team. So thank you.
And anecdotally, to the extent we can, we will, um, we've talked about it and I've been working with the captain. Um, we will try and augment um being visible behind the buses as much as we can too at the beginning of the school year next year, just with the patrol staff that we have. Um, like I've talked about, I'm I'm very fortunate right now that I I have a full complement of staff. So I'm hopeful that with that full complement, it'll be a little easier for us to do it intermittently. I'm not saying that it's gonna be an everyday morning and afternoon thing, but you know, maybe Tuesday in the morning we'll be behind it and then maybe Friday in the afternoon we'll be behind it and we'll kind of just keep it mixed up to try and keep the honest people honest.
Yep.
So that will be a a point of emphasis for us going into the fall.
Yeah.
So
Why don't we just take one of the old cruisers and uh tow it behind the school buses?
Ah.
Cause people will catch on very quickly. I promise you that.
Yeah. Great. Alright, well, thank you very much. Unfortunately, Darling's apparently closes at six, so you can't rush down there and get the car tonight, but um oh wait, um, the last thing on the manager report was a mini grant application. Um, for Sam Diamond. I took it upon myself to call Sam Diamond today, who um submitted the application. Sam's got an interest in uh painting pickleball lines. She's, the request, the mini grant request was pickleball lines on the hu- on the tennis courts uh at the high school. And of course, they're owned by the high school. She's been in touch with Meredith. So I I thought, I talked with in talking with Sam, we thought it made sense to maybe bring it back and ask Bill to since there's a, there's a community interest in pickleball, it's all the rage. It's, you know, Meredith Higgins was part, I saw an email back and so I don't know if there's an opportunity for us to look at lines for pickleball at the tennis courts, but could we make that a, an item we talk to the school about, given that there's a community interest? And we don't have to have it painted by July fifteenth or anything, but you know.
Clarify, so with the grant request?
I I think we kind of punt on the grant request.
Okay.
Um,
Nope, it's good to get.
I had this, I'm in a pickle thing going on. I couldn't pull it off. So, but if we could punt, if we could punt on the grant request for now, we'll keep Sam and I've committed to keep Sam informed about what would we talk about? And if there's an opportunity to do something, you know, it's it's the hi- it's the schools tennis courts that aren't the towns, but obviously we have an expectation as taxpayers that our schools and our town will work closely together in every way they can. So
You need to be diligent.
What do you, I'm I'm not clear what you're asking or what you're suggesting.
So you're suggesting, Dan, are you suggesting that staff or Clint would talk to staff about whether it's possible for us to paint the lines for the school and not have it come through the mini grant?
Right.
Be something that the town did to help out the school to paint the lines? Is that what's being suggested?
Yep.
I wasn't sure.
I don't know if the, you know, they've got some of the rainbow paint left over from the crosswalk or something. We can, um, maybe not that, but something, Bill, right? I mean, yeah. Sam Diamond. And I'll forward you the mini grant. It's
Meredith, Meredith Higgins, Sam Diamond.
Yep. Sorry.
Know anybody over there?
Uh. Yeah, I think that'd be great. And then if we don't have to fund a mini, you know, if it gets done, that's, you know, if there's interested in it, if there's a reason why we can't do it, if you can't hold high school tennis matches on a court that's got a bunch of different lines on it, you know, that, let's get an answer, right? I mean, you kind of, you know, do it if we can. If we, if we can't, let's give folks a reason why we can't and it's easy to understand and go from there.
And even better if the school paid for it.
Still trying to get them to buy the pool, but alright.
I'm 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 a little confused, not, I I don't know, maybe concerned that out of a, out of a grant application, we've turned and kind of again appointed staff to go do something. I love the idea of us working together.
Yeah.
Hundred percent. But I, again, I I think everything I've heard is the dance card's full and they've got a lot going on. And then so to to jump this in, to me feels more like this was a grant application. She has someone to do it. That feels like we're piling on again to staff and I I'm gonna put it out there again. I don't, I just, I I again, I really applaud the thought and the effort of us working with the school and that's where all, I think everyone's, we're all about that, but jumping in on a specific project and kind of taking it over and having our staff go find the right paint and do all that stuff. I assume this Re- Reno Wilson line striping does that. Granted, I know we we've done some stuff too, but I I'd be more inclined to go, go award the grant. I love pickleball. Um, and but I had the same questions too, but they've obviously, they they control the court, so I I'm sure they've worked all that out. I, or they're working it out. Um, I'd be more inclined to fund the grant and let them run with it personally.
Actually, I'm not sure. I mean, I don't know that we as a council know that they've worked this out with the schools yet. My question on this mini grant was what does the school have to say?
Yeah.
So I think that's my first question is, is the school on board with that or not? And then
Sam Diamond is, it's the same Sam Diamond that's the principal of the school, correct? Or my, or is this a different person?
Seven Spencer Street?
Yeah.
Meredith Diamond.
Yeah.
It's Meredith Diamond who's at the school.
Right, yeah, this is mixed up then. It's Meredith Diamond lives at Spencer Street.
Anyway.
I spoke with Sam Diamond today.
Yeah, it's not, it's not Meredith Diamond Leo. So I do think, right, so we we just seem to be, I think there's multiple questions still on this mini grant
Yep.
for me. I need to know for sure that the school actually is in favor of this idea and wants it to happen. And then I agree with you entirely. Staff needs to tell us. If this is a hassle and it's not something they wanna do, then they shouldn't have to do it, but I think they should get a chance to respond.
And I, yeah, and I feel like in this setting, i- it's not that conducive for a staff to say no, I'm busy. So I don't know. I feel, I I don't know. Maybe you've had private conversations already. And I and I guess I'm completely confused on the Meredith and the Sams now. I I'm lost. So now I see why you were lost.
Yeah, alright, well, yeah, we can't give somebody money to go paint lines on the school's tennis courts without checking with the school. And you know, Sam had has got like an email into Meredith and, you know, like I ducked and I I I don't know with certainty where they are with it. So to the extent that we've got staff that can work with staff and just have a sense of what's going on.
I would be inclined to agree with Leo that, I mean, if the school is okay with this, I think that is the question we need answered. Um, I think funding this does not put extra work on staff and also allows for some sort of community involvement in this sort of project. I I would be inclined to agree with you on that.
Alright, I don't know where that leaves us then. I mean, we
Well, just to have staff to reach out to the school to see what, you know, what their thoughts are and then we can talk about this um mini grant application further pending that information.
I feel like this is, this is our, this is our deal. This is the mini grant thing. So I think, could you again, I I can't believe how mixed up I am on who Sam is, but I I feel like that's part of what we need to do is reach out is can this be done? Um, and that was, so you've already done that, haven't you?
No, I'm, I have not talked to the school about, I've got a mini grant. I took it upon myself chair's prerogative to call the person who submitted it, cause I wasn't sure anybody else had. So we had a little information, given the size of the grant, she's requesting two thousand dollars, which is gonna be, you know, three times more than we're gonna approve for mini grants.
Oh, I guess I was assuming that it was seven fifty.
No, it's a big grant request and it is, you know, we have, you know, we we have, we have conversations about what staff can do, what staff shouldn't do, you know.
I'll call
Earlier today, you know, in terms of the Webster project and, you know, we, so anyway.
I can, I can coordinate with the school. I'll call and see what what is and isn't, can't be done if you want.
I think it's cleaner if staff does it, but um I guess I defer to
I I haven't, I've met the new super, I've met the superintendent, so she hasn't met the new manager. I have a chance to meet with her this week and I'm just gonna throw that into our conversation and we'll come, I'll give you a report back, hopefully within the week.
Alright.
And then we'll know what, but I'll have a recommendation maybe of some next steps.
Is that not too much work, given that you're gonna talk to her?
Since I've already got her, yeah, I already got her on a meeting, so it's not like we're covering up special time.
Alright.
I'm sorry, I I hadn't realized that, looking at again at it, that the the amount that you're requesting was that much. So I I I might have different thoughts.
Yeah.
We'll see.
Alright, yeah, I mean, I take the time to talk to her. I read the whole application and Alright, yeah, I mean, I take the time to talk to her. I read the whole application and so, yeah, that would be helpful, I think. And obviously we're not going to direct staff to do anything on it. Other than that, for now, we'll have an update from the manager. That seems appropriate. Okay. Anything else from anybody on pickleball? Alright, um, where are we now? Uh, do we have any public petitions? Any more additional public comment?
We have a hand raised online.
I'm sorry, Pete, we do?
Yes, we do.
Well, that's, that's awesome. Um, could you move them over please? Hi, welcome to the council meeting. Thank you for tuning in. Could you introduce yourself please and, um, provide public comment? The public comment policy is, um, on our agenda. Um, if you have any questions about it, I'll be happy to help you with it.
Thank you. My name is Avinash Rude. I'm really happy to be tuning in and seeing that the order authorizing town council. For the collecting bargaining unit using A F S C M E. Is, you know, on the table. If people know, uh, I have, I was an ex, um, town of foreign employee for seven years. You know, lead organizer for this, uh, unit, union process. Um, I did get fired. Um, that's a different thing, but, um. I just wanted to say I'm happy that there's a lot of work that has gone, um, in this and that it's moving forward. I'd like to also say that. There was a, um. One of the other agenda items was, um. That I'm really, um, happy that, um. It's on there was that, um. We, now I'm missing it. I'm really nervous. Um. But you know, I, I really applaud the council's work and the staff's work. Um, and I'm a resident of the town. And I'm, um, really pleased to see these changes and welcome the new town manager. So thank you. That's my public comment.
Thank you. Very well said. And I appreciate, uh, the participation in today's public comment session. Anybody else, uh, with a hand raised, Pete?
Not at this time. That's all for now.
Again, thank you, Mr. Rude for, uh, the public comment today. Um. Alright, now item. Fourteen is executive session. I need a motion to move into executive session pursuant to one. Oh, are we not? So we're not going to do that now. So. Yep. Um. We are not going to, we have, we do not have a, is there any context that we're able to provide?
All the information wasn't able to be available in time for the meeting, so we have to just delay.
Okay.
We'll get back to you when we have more information from them.
Okay, so that means, um, I will now entertain a motion to move into executive session.
Motion to adjourn?
Um. Motion to adjourn? Anything else? Second, Council Kenny's on it. Motion to adjourn the second. And, uh, we need to vote. And we have to sign some documents before we go. So, uh, let's go with Counselor, motion adjourn, Counselor Powers?
In favor.
Counselor Baker. Counselor Kenny?
Favor.
Counselor Marks?
In favor.
Counselor Bertholz?
In favor.
Nice. Counsel Lawway?
In favor.
And Counsel Demerit votes in favor. So we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. And we have some documents to sign. Thank you to staff for sticking with us. Thanks, Belinda.